Good morning. Welcome to the Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, meeting of the California Coastal Commission. I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning to downtown San Francisco. I think it's one of our first meetings down here, at least that I've experienced, and it's great to be here in this wonderful city. I'd like to have the roll call, please. Ms. Miller?
Commissioner Akiri.
Here.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Kunkel.
Here.
Commissioner Lowenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Naroff.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga.
Presenting.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Chair Hart.
President, thank you very much. We'll move on to virtual meeting procedures, Chris.
All right. Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the CalSpan website. Those who wish to address the Commission today can do so in person, through the Zoom platform, or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the Commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless emittal are available on the Commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the Chair, and we will accept a request to speak on an item up until the Chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to the Commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission's staff at 562-477-9089. Again, that number is 562-477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the Commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris. We'll now go to agenda changes, and who will be presenting those? Mr. Tufo.
Good morning, Chair Hart, Vice Chair Escalante, and Commissioners. We have seven changes to the agenda today that are noted in the Agenda Changes memo posted to our online agenda. First, item 10A has been moved to consent for the CDP application by the Mad River Slue Shellfish Nursery in Humboldt County. Next, item 14A has been withdrawn. Excuse me. This is an appeal from Santa Barbara County that was withdrawn after local permit exemption was rescinded. Next, item 15B has been moved to consent. This is for a fisheries restoration project in Del Norte County. Next, item 17A has been postponed, along with item 18A for an appeal and permit amendment for residential development in Venice Beach. Next, item 19A has been moved to consent for residential development in Hermosa Beach. And finally, item 19B has been postponed for residential development in Venice Beach. This concludes the changes to today's agenda, and with that, we're at item four, general public comment. So I'll turn the mic back to you, Chair Hart.
Thanks very much. All right. We're going to open the hearing for general public comment, and we will give you some instructions on how we're going to proceed.
Okay. For members of the public, I will be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak during general public comment. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I'll call your names in the order that they appear in our signup list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips. There is a raise-your-hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen to raise your hand. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on the phone by dialing *6. And please remember to state your name for the record, starting with...
Excuse me one second, Chris. I just want to make an additional statement. I just wanted to remind the public that general public comment is limited to matters that are related to the Commission's business. If speakers comment on unrelated matters, I may ask them to focus their comments on Commission business, and if they fail to do so, they may be asked to conclude their comments. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Thank you. Starting with speakers in the room, we have Michael Rosine, followed by Glenn Rogers, and then we'll move to our Zoom participants. Michael Rosine.
Good morning. My name is Michael Rosine. I'm a longtime resident of the Outer Sunset District in San Francisco, and I'm speaking this morning in regards to Proposition K, which passed recently regarding the closure of the upper grade highway between Lincoln and Slope Boulevards, a two-mile section of highway which is a major thoroughfare for traffic on the west side of the city. It's one of three major thoroughfares on the west side of the city, the others being Sunset Boulevard, which ends at Golden Gate Park, and the other being 19th Avenue, which is continual congestion. Now, this measure has passed mostly by the majority of the east side of the city. We on the west side are strongly against the measure. We tried this already during COVID, and it resulted in very dangerous driving situations through the neighborhood. We refer to it as sunset roulette, where there is uncontrolled one-way intersections, stop signs for the other, and accidents occur there. Also, yesterday, I drove the great highway from Slope to Lincoln at 30 miles an hour. That's the set speed. Takes four minutes to drive. I then drove from Lincoln to Noriega on the lower grade highway with no traffic. I was the only car on the road. It took three minutes. You're going to have increased pollution from motor vehicles going through there, as well as brake dust, oil. It's an environmental concern. There will also be increased traffic on the other roadways. Saturday, I came home from the beach, and Lincoln was backed up more than two blocks with traffic, and this is going to be a daily thing if this measure passes and gets instituted. It's just a wrong thing to do. So the impact on people on the west side is going to be tremendous. There's going to be increased accidents, injuries from people trying to get down if it is turned into a parkway. I almost got ran over with my wife by two bicyclists supporting Prop K.
Thank you, sir. That concludes your time. Thank you very much. And I imagine we'll be taking up that item as a formal item at some point in the future.
Okay. Glenn Rogers, and then we'll start with our Zoom participants with Lauren Siegel, Heather Fort, and then Peyton Olward. Glenn Rogers.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Glenn Rogers, landscape architect and president of the Coalition for San Francisco Neighborhoods. I'm here to speak on the closing of the great highway from Lincoln to Slope Boulevard. This legislation was done at the last minute without notification to the residents, and this is a miscarriage of justice. Those who live beside the great highway will suffer automobile traffic alongside streets, a lack of parking as hikers park besides the highway, and increased amounts of sand in their homes and in their sewer systems. The whole system is a travesty. When the great highway is open completely to recreation, pedestrians wishing to travel to the beach can cross across sand dunes from everywhere, trampling the vegetation, causing the dunes to collapse, and allowing sand to leave the beach. This increased foot traffic from all over the great highway can cause damage to the snowy plover habitat. Proposition K does not address this failure to consider the snowy plover habitat, but the Coastal Commission can reverse this legislation. The closure of the highway appears to be a land grab by those wishing to develop this very valuable piece of real estate. In the photo we have... Do we have a photo for me? There it is. You can see. There's a green belt there. This green belt is 40 feet wide beside the great highway. In fact, this green belt is the same width as the great highway itself. Why not use this space for recreation and keep the great highway open? In my opinion, this idea was not suggested because the 40-foot-wide green belt is planned to be used for development. Can we see the next picture, please? Today, with a busy highway present, the green belt is dismissed by development because it is too close to the speeding cars. But as you can see in this supervisor's district, this is on Sunset Boulevard, this home... I'm sorry. Go back to pictures number two. This home is on Sunset Boulevard. This is a very narrow piece of green belt that was built on. And this is Senator Engardio's legacy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving to our Zoom participants, Lauren Siegel, followed by Heather Fort, and then now Diana Sandoval. Lauren Siegel.
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Siegel, and I live in the coastal zone of Venice. I have spoken with you about the permitting of ADUs in the coastal zone many times over the past year. Please allow me to remind you of my situation. I have an employed adult daughter who is moving back to Los Angeles. I'm not sure why you're showing those pictures.
That was probably just an error. Please proceed.
Okay. Sorry. I have spoken with you many times about permitting in the coastal zone over the past year. Please allow me to remind you of my situation. I have an employed adult daughter who's moving back to Los Angeles, and she can't afford to live in Venice, where she grew up. I have a garage where I can easily convert part of it into a one-bedroom apartment for her. Space already exists. I have obtained sign-offs for most apartments, yet I need a coastal development permit for the ADU. I am expected to spend approximately $50,000 for the permitting and consultant fees, as well as wait many months before I can get an approval from Coastal. And the Coastal Commission will eventually approve my ADU. ADUs don't get appealed, and there is no coastal impact. There was an agreement during the October Coastal Commission meeting that a letter from Coastal staff would be sent to the city to offer suggested solutions that the city could implement to create an expedited coastal development permit process for ADUs. We then contacted Councilwoman Tracy Park's office. Her office expressed strong support for this change. Her planning director has recently been doing his best to help us navigate city planning bureaucracy, but we are being met with mostly confusion with one department handing us off to the next. Direction from the Coastal Commission would be extremely helpful. If we have clear, demonstrated support from the Coastal Commission, along with the support of Tracy Park's office, we feel we could get the city to finally respond to the community's concerns. Can you please let me know where do we stand in moving forward with a waiver to allow ADUs in the coastal zone? When will we be able to add more affordable units in an easy, quick, low-cost process? Please, please, share your direction with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Heather Fort, followed by Diana Sandoval, and then Barry Cassely. Heather Fort.
My name is Heather Fort. I live in Santa Barbara, California, and I owned my house before SpaceX started launching. I'm not sure that's what I wanted to talk about, was just the increase in SpaceX launches, and I don't know if that's on topic for today, so please let me...
No, that's fine. You can talk about that. That's not on the agenda today.
Okay. I just wanted to let my voice be heard in a correct forum, that I was just concerned about the increase in launches happening at Vandenberg Air Force Base. They're very loud, and I understand that launches need to be made, and I'm totally okay with that, but increasing them substantially seems to be wildly... interfere with the enjoyment of life and property there, meaning that it would become an absolute nuisance. And also, it would decrease the property values in Santa Barbara, I think, exponentially. It is very expensive to live there, so it seems to be... It would decrease, I think, if they keep doing it and increasing it. And so I just wanted to say that, and I know the Coastal Commission is trying hard to... I thank them for that, and if there's anything the community could do, or any access to information, that would be helpful in regards to helping the Coastal Commission, or request more information. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Diana Sandoval, followed by Barry Cassely, and then John De Herrera. Diana Sandoval. You can unmute.
Hi. I can't start the video, though.
Uh... No. Are you able to? No? Okay, there you go.
Yes. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Diana Sandoval. You might remember me from last month, when I brought up the blocked public trail on the private polo field on 3215 Bo Hill Road in Carpinteria. As you may remember, Santa Barbara County has a history of exempting this property from rules and regulations. The county even allowed this property owner to rebuild a vehicle bridge that had been abandoned for over six years in environmentally sensitive habitat area, a high flood zone, any streams, and illegally on my property, all without permits. The issue is, on your agenda today, at item 14, I'm the appellate and effective property owner, but due to the Commission's unwritten rules, I won't have a chance to speak then. When the Commission identifies a substantial issue on appeal, they're supposed to hold the local government accountable. Sadly, in my case, that hasn't happened. Let me put a few things on the record. First, I never withdrew my appeal. I'm asking for enforcement of the Coastal Act. Second, the agenda description is misleading. The bridge is also used for vehicles. I asked the Ventura Office multiple times to correct it, but they told me they wouldn't change it because once posted, it can't be changed. Another unwritten rule. Third, my request to make my records public on today's agenda were also denied by the Ventura Office, again, due to an unwritten rule. Lastly, the Commission didn't take action by issuing a cease and desist order, a restoration order, or a notice of violation, even though you have the legal authority to do so. This development was done in environmentally sensitive habitat area without a coastal development permit and in violation of the Coastal Act, and that should matter. We know Mr. Hudson is in close contact with the county, yet we continue to see actions that disregard the Coastal Act. I trust that the Commission will protect the Coastal Act and take the corrective actions needed in my case today. The Coastal Act was put in place to protect California's coast and to ensure local governments play by the rules. I'm here because I need the Commission's help to enforce those protections. Please issue an ex parte cease and desist order, a restoration order, and a notice of violation for the unpermitted development. You have the legal obligation to step in and make things right, and I'm asking for you to use it. Let's make sure this kind of situation doesn't become the norm. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Barry Cassely, followed by John De Herrera, and then we're missing a bunch of people, so I'll call their names and then ask them to raise their hand after. Barry Cassely.
Hi. This is Barry Cassely. I'll be brief. I've been working with Lauren Siegel to try and change the processing of ADUs in the Venice Coastal Zone to something more affordable and expedited, and I just... I cannot describe to you the frustration of trying to deal with city bureaucracy. We greatly appreciate the Coastal Commission's support for this change that was expressed by several Commissioners in the October meeting. We greatly appreciate Steve Hudson coming forward and explaining his past urging of city planning to come forward with something on their own that would expedite this process. At this point, I think we would just appreciate any further help in the form of a letter or whatever from Coastal Commission stating overtly your all's position. We feel like that would really help us in this matter. So again, we thank you for your support thus far, and that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. John De Herrera. Okay. So you're coming in as a panelist now. When you're able to, please unmute. It looks like you're actually not connected to audio. Let me try to get you in as an attendee again, and we'll try your audio there. Let me... Give us a second. John, it seems that you're not connected to audio. There's no way we can hear you. Try to drop...
Okay, I just did unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
...a number of emails over the last couple of weeks. This is two minutes just to make complaint about the launchings. Is that correct?
Sure.
I guess. Please go ahead.
Okay. You know, looking at the situation, I just, you know, if before any of these concerns came to light, I just think that the Coastal Commission and other agencies would have, you know, pushed back on the SpaceX and asked them, you know, what are their plans for this type of disturbance? I am certainly not alone. If you go to Nextdoor, the Nextdoor app for Santa Barbara, there's constant complaints of people being frightened, their pets being frightened. And so, because things are moving so fast, I just don't see how a private company or an individual can, you know, diminish the quality of life by their own endeavors. So I just... I think... I hope the Coastal Commission does something, gets really stringent on, you know, what is actually happening and what needs to be done to put things back in balance. But pretty much that's it. I'm just, you know, I just wanted to complain about some private company or individual suddenly encroaching on, you know, other people's well-being. So that's all I can say. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no other speakers? Yep.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. We'll now turn to the Executive Director's report. Director Hucklebridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. My published Executive Director report can be found on the Commission's website, but I will spend a few minutes going over several of the items. First up, this past month, I approved a grant of just under $500,000 for the city of Ventura for a comprehensive update of the city's LUP. This update will include developing an ESHMAP, a sea level rise and coastal hazards technical memorandum, a beach management and adaptation plan, extensive public engagement, and an LUP update that will be submitted for your certification. Importantly, the LUP update will incorporate an adaptive pathways approach to coastal management, and will take into account socioeconomic factors such as environmental justice and community engagement. Next, Commission staff attended several conferences and events that I wanted to share with you. I'll go over each one briefly, but please refer to my written report or published report for additional detail. Last week, Deputy Director Shanna Gray and I attended the California State Leadership Forum with other leaders from across state government. The focus of the forum was leading with a human-centered approach, and the central message was to rethink how we approach problems and to center the public or users in our state agency work. This message really resonated with me as we continue to dig deeper into our EJ work and as we evolve how we approach coastal resiliency and climate adaptation to ensure California's precious coastline is vibrant and available for future generations to enjoy. On September 17th, several Commission staff joined interagency partners from the Mitigation Planning Regulatory Agency Working Group and the Humboldt Bay Harbor District on a site tour of the proposed Humboldt Bay offshore wind-heavy lift terminal. The visit was intended to help the agencies understand the nature of anticipated impacts associated with the terminal development, including both onshore and in-water areas around the bay, and in the context of the broader landscape. On October 1st, Commission staff joined partners at Caltrans and the Redwood National and State Parks for a tour of Last Chance Grade Project site along Highway 1 in Del Norte County. The visit centered around discussion of avoidance and minimization measures, alternatives, best practices, forest health science and implementation practices, and importantly, the proposed habitat mitigation proposal, which centers around the Redwoods Rising Project in the National and State Parks. In early October, Central Coast staff attended a celebration for the completion of the new Advanced Water Purification Center for the Pure Water SoCal Project, which included top dignitaries, U.S. Representative Jimmy Panetta and State Senator John Laird, as well as representatives from the U.S. EPA, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, and the State Water Resources Control Board. The project involves the collection, treatment, and purification of wastewater that will be sent to seawater intrusion prevention recharge wells to replenish the Santa Cruz mid-country... a mid-county, excuse me, groundwater basin, thus providing the dual benefits of reducing ocean discharges and increasing the resiliency of Santa Cruz County's water supply. The Commission approved a CDP for this project in March 2020. On October 29th, Commission staff, including Commission's engineer Jeremy Smith and San Diego Coast District Resiliency Coordinator Tony Ross, attended an all-day summit hosted by the Scripps Institute of Oceanography at UC San Diego. The summit consists of presentations from Scripps researchers on new insights from the decades of wave and coastal change monitoring that has been funded through state and federal support. Some highlights included presentations on advances of monitoring tools such as satellite-derived shoreline change data and beach dynamics in San Diego County, as well as early findings from research focused on tools to identify signals of bluff collapse that could be used for potential warning systems. Jeremy also spoke on a panel with federal and local partners on aligning coastal management decision-making timelines with research data and scientific findings. Next, we have a few announcements from our public education program. The first king tides of the season are upon us, November 15th, 16th, and 17th, and we are seeking help with our California King Tides Project. We ask the public to participate by photographing the highest predicted high tides of the year to increase our understanding of what's vulnerable to flooding today, plan for future sea level rise, and get us talking and thinking about the impacts of the climate crisis and what we can do to make a difference. If you'd like to participate, please see our California King Tides Project website or my published ED report for simple instructions, and please be safe out there. The 25th Annual Ocean Coast... Sorry. California Ocean and Coastal Amateur Photography Contest was held from July through September. Amateur photographers throughout California submitted 963 photos of the people of the California coast, ocean, and coastal wildlife, and the scenic coast. A panel of judges that consisted of professional photographers and naturalists selected three prize winners and 11 honorable mentions. Public ed staff will be providing an annual update next month and have promised to unveil the winners to us at that time, so stay tuned for next month. Staff hosted a Whale Tail Grantee Networking Event on October 9th to provide an opportunity for organizations to learn from and to connect with each other. This event was organized in direct response to feedback received via grantee satisfaction surveys. Grant recipients from fiscal year 2021 up to the present cohort were invited, and 55 people participated in the online event. Also, the latest round of competitive whale tail grants closed for applications on November 4th. Nearly 300 proposals were submitted, well surpassing last year's record of 219. Proposals will be reviewed over the next two months, and funding recommendations will come before the Commission at the February hearing, so stay tuned. The Clean Boating Program also had a busy month. October 26th, the ports of LA and San Diego, the city of Morro Bay, and the California Product Stewardship Council partnered with CalRecycle, California State Parks, and Coastal Commission's California Boating Clean and Green Program, collecting expired marine flares and educating residents about marine flare management safety to protect California communities and the local environment. 2,900 expired marine flares, that's approximately 1,500 pounds, were collected at these events. Also, Vivian Maddock will lead... at these events. Also, Vivian Maddick will lead a California Clean Boating Network Educational Virtual Meeting on November 14th from 10 to 12, where attendees will learn directly from California experts about subjects impacting our waterways, including what the state is doing uh with unwanted and abandoned vessels, and the importance of educating and encouraging Southern California boaters to use sewage pump outs, pump-out stations, and help improve water quality. And finally, a new dockside podcast episode was published um on October 28th titled "Tackling Abandoned and Unwanted Vessels in California." The guests include discuss the problem of abandoned vessels in California, options the state has to assist public agencies and boaters in preventing recreational vessels from being abandoned in our waterways, and when they are abandoned, to assist with their disposal, and much more. Please take a listen. Our Environmental Justice Program also had a busy month. Uh, first, I wanted to announce that we have officially expanded the commission's Spanish program to four certified bilingual staff positions to further the EJ policies' accessibility and inclusivity goals by providing additional outreach, interpretation during hearings, and translation and review services. After reviewing internal applicants, we are pleased to announce the selection of Janet Torres in our South Coast office, Jose Hernandez, South Coast, um, and Shahar Amitay of our statewide unit, also in our Long Beach office, all certified to provide Spanish translation and limited interpretation. The program, led by Environmental Justice Manager Javier Pediarrez, aims to further improve our outreach and accessibility for Spanish-speaking communities at the commission. In addition, in October, Javier participated alongside EJ and Equity Leads from the Ocean Protection Council and the State Coastal Conservancy in the inaugural Coastal Leadership Program hosted by the Audubon Society. The state EJ leads engaged with Audubon's diverse and talented program cohort to discuss their career journey, the challenge of integrating EJ and Equity into government work, and shared insights on joining state government. This opportunity not only fostered valuable dialogue, but also sparked interest in the whaletail program among attendees. My published report includes a fabulous picture of the state crew, so please check that out. Next, I want to let the commission and the public know that we are actively recruiting to fill a tribal affairs coordinator position at the commission. We are looking for a qualified candidate to lead the agency's tribal engagement work, including both formal government-to-government consultation and informal coordination with tribes, support our district and program-specific tribal liaisons, and coordinate with other state and federal agencies on tribal engagement efforts and policy, including offshore wind work. The position is open until January 2nd, and we are seeking your help in getting the word out and then identifying potentially interested candidates. The position is up on our website, um, and I'm also happy to follow up with an email to commissioners, so you can send it up to your networks, please. And last but not least, I'm pleased to announce that a proposal submitted by the commission's ecology group recently was selected by the UC Davis Environmental Policy Clinic as a project for its 20-week Capstone Course for students enrolled in the university's graduate program of environmental policy and management. As a result, the commission will welcome a team of five graduate students as partners beginning in January 2025 to examine the relationship between ecological restoration and environmental justice in our coastal zone, including through analysis of past permitting decisions and policies, developing guidance recommendations, and identifying opportunities to strategically guide restoration efforts to benefit disadvantaged and underserved communities through commission actions such as compensatory mitigation for habitat impacts. Staff from our ecology, mapping, environmental justice, and transportation units will collaborate to mentor the students. Uh, we are very excited about the many opportunities this program uh and project will provide to both the students and our agency as we look forward, and we look forward to sharing the project findings with you in the future. Madam Chair, that concludes my executive director's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Dr. Hucklebridge. First, I'll ask if there's any public comment.
Uh, no public comment.
All right, then turning to the commission, Commissioner Trimble Sanders.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to thank Dr. Hucklebridge for um a great report. Very glad to see that Ventura got a grant for that comprehensive update and that EJ will be included in that comprehensive up update. Really important. And also want to thank you and Deputy Director Shanna Gray for attending the California State Leadership For- Forum and reporting back on. I really appreciated that uh focus on how we approach problems to center on the public. Um, particularly in these times, it's really important uh for civic dialogue and engagement to do that. And uh wanted to thank Javier and his team and for reaching out and giving updates on the work with the expansion of the Spanish-language speaking staff and also the Audubon Coastal Leadership Project and um the Capstone Project. I've worked with grad students before in my capacity as an executive director of a nonprofit, and that's a really wonderful and creative way to get support. Um, so really, kudos to you and the team for um exploring that possibility of bringing in that kind of expertise. And then on the whaletail grants, I had a question about whether or not it's possible to, and I've mentioned this before, and I don't know what the the restrictions would be, but it just seems like the the demand keeps going up every year now, over 300 applications. Is there any way to partner with a philanthropic partner to think about like a match or something like that, even if um even if they, even if the philanthropic partner was able to kind of direct some of those funds? Uh, it just seems like there's a tremendous need as kind of more people become aware of the challenges that we're facing uh with sea level rise and climate change. And so just thinking about, I know there are a lot of great philanthropic folks out there who are interested in these issues, but since we already have this focal point, it may be an opportunity to expand our impact with, even with limited resources. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Nadoff?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I just, uh, it's wonderful to see those photos. The the photography's amazing. It's so inspirational. So thank you for that. It filled my soul this morning. I also, I had a couple of questions about public comment. Did I miss a chance to comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I didn't know anyone had a comment on that.
So I can, I, it's directed at the executive director anyway, so maybe this is appropriate. Um, and I just had a question about the Venice ADU um guidance that uh I remember when that came up before, and could you let us know where that is and hopefully help those folks out?
Yes, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Director Steve Hudson for a response.
And good morning. I would like to provide a quick status update on that letter. Our district staff does have a draft, and we're planning on finalizing that letter to the city of LA soon, which outlines methods discussed during our last meeting on how the city could expedite these sorts of ADU applications. Concurrently, the commission's statewide planning unit staff is also working on a more comprehensive memo intended to provide similar direction to all local governments, and we will be sending that to the planning directors of the various counties and cities within the coastal zone. We do need a little additional time to ensure consistency between those two efforts to make sure that our letter to the city of LA and that memo that we would be providing statewide are consistent and on all points. Uh, so we do intend to finalize that letter to the city of LA, hopefully before our December hearing, with that memo to follow in the early part of the new year.
That's great. I think um consistency is important to take the time to get that right. And I would also just say that if anyone who's watched the work of the commission over the last couple of years will see that um accessory dwelling units move through fairly quickly. So um I I think that's the intention of what we're trying to get done here. Um, and I saw also that Ms. Hegi just came in. I did have a question about the item on the carpentaria trail that, so you might not have heard the comment, but there was a comment that there was a trail uh in carpentaria that um had some violations, and there was a question as to where that is. Does, we, we don't have to do it right now, but I just wanted to flag that.
All right, Ms. Hegi, you want to respond?
Thank you. Through the chair. Um, we, um, oh dear me, I just lost it. Yes, we were tracking this this morning. We are on top of it. We have a um, uh, I'm sorry, I did not see the public comment, but one of my staff did. And um, we've coordinated with the county of Santa Barbara and can confirm that the easement, recrodation, and the opening of the trail are being actively pursued. So we're working with them. It's not, hasn't been taken care of yet. That's absolutely accurate, but we're on it. And we, she commented a few weeks, a few months ago on the same issue, and so we worked with the county since then.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry.
That's it for me.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions on either public comment or the executive director's report?
All right. Not seeing any, anyone. I'll now uh go to commission correspondence. I wanted to refer the commission and the public to the letter that is attached under this item. This is a letter that was written from, uh, signed by myself on behalf of the commission to President Joe Biden with regard to our request that a state of emergency be declared um because of the situation in the Tijuana Valley and specifically addressing the urgent need to repair and expand the South Bay International Wastewater Treatment Plant. So I would refer everyone to that letter, which was mailed on November 11th, and uh an additional letter will be sent today to Cassidy. That goes to the director.
Uh, goes to Commissioner Keen there of the International Boundary and Water Commission.
Right. And do you anticipate that being sent today?
Yeah, I'm actually in the process of posting it to our agenda right now, and it will go out shortly this morning.
Okay. And will that be under the commission correspondence item?
Exactly.
Okay, perfect. So uh everyone can see those letters under that item. All right, moving on. We do not have a legislative report this month, so that brings us to Sea Level Rise Policy Guidance.
Thank you, and I'd like to turn it over to Kelsey Ducklow of our statewide planning unit for this item.
Thanks, Kate. We can uh start right up once the PowerPoint is up. Thank you. And actually, you can go ahead and skip to slide two. We'll just get, dive right in. So we are here today to update the, to, for the adoption of the updated guidance. But as a reminder, the commission's original Sea Level Rise Policy Guidance was unanimously adopted in August of 2015 to provide information and recommendations for how to address Sea Level Rise in the context of the Coastal Act and in various coastal commission planning and permitting processes. It includes a set of guiding principles for addressing Sea Level Rise, a summary of Sea Level Rise science, a step-by-step, step-by-step processes for addressing Sea Level Rise in local coastal programs and applications for coastal development permits, a library of adaptation options, a discussion of the legal context of adaptation planning, and several appendices with more detailed scientific information and resources for stakeholders. The guidance was updated in 2018 to reflect evolving science and is now being updated again to reflect several new and evolving topics. In all instances, work on the Sea Level Rise Policy Guidance has been supported through funding from NOAA, and we continue to thank our federal partner for this support. Next slide. The policy guidance is currently being updated to address three main topics. These updates were discussed at the August and September commission meetings and are included in the staff report for this item, so I won't go into detail today. But I do want to provide a high-level summary of the main update topics and a reminder about the key changes that have been made in the 2024 update. The first topic is related to new best available science. In June of this year, the Ocean Protection Council adopted an update to the state Sea Level Rise guidance to reflect evolving information on anticipated Sea Level Rise, primarily driven by updated research from both the IPCC at the global level and NOAA at the national level. The commission's guidance is being updated to reflect this best available science with key changes including an updated uh in updated discussion of Sea Level Rise science in Chapter Three and Appendix A, and new tables of anticipated Sea Level Rise amounts throughout the guidance. Staff also took the opportunity to add an expanded discussion on the difference between analysis and design as it relates to using different Sea Level Rise scenarios, an area that has continued to result in confusion for some stakeholders. The second update topic relates to Senate Bill 272 from Senator Laird, which requires local governments to incorporate Sea Level Rise plans as part of new or updated LCPs, and further requires the commission to adopt guidelines for these plans. The updates related to SB 272 and the guidance are meant to fulfill this obligation. Additions and changes are primarily included in Chapter Five, which pertains to addressing Sea Level Rise and LCPs. A new section summarizing the language and intent of SB 272 has been added, along with a discussion regarding both the requirements for consistency with SB 272 and guidance and best practices for this type of planning work. A box at the end of Chapter Five summarizes and highlights the minimum requirements for each of the six Sea Level Rise Plan components required by the bill. The last update topic is to better integrate environmental justice considerations in the guidance. These updates build on the 2019 adoption of the commission's environmental justice policy and are the culmination of a NOAA-funded project to develop policy guidance that informs regulatory and planning processes to address Sea Level Rise through an environmental justice lens. Key changes include the addition of new environmental justice-focused guiding principle and an expanded discussion in Chapter Four on how Sea Level Rise disproportionately impacts EJ communities and the importance of meaningful engagement with these communities when conducting Sea Level Rise planning work. Steps related to identifying and meaningfully engaging with EJ communities in and around the local jurisdiction or project site were also added to the processes for addressing Sea Level Rise and LCPs and CDPs. Next slide. Following extensive internal and external coordination with a variety of key stakeholders and sister agencies during the early portion of this year, a public review draft of the 2024 update to the Sea Level Rise Policy Guidance was released on July 19th. At that time, commission staff also sent letters and emails to all tribes in the coastal zone as identified by the Native American Heritage Commission, inviting tribal coordination on this update. As mentioned previously, commission staff introduced the 2024 guidance update at two commission meetings, the first in August focusing on best available science and SB 272, and the second in September focusing on environmental justice. A 65-day public comment period closed on September 23rd. Next slide. In addition to formal and informal comments, staff received at the commission meetings an ongoing coordination. A total of 14 comment letters were received during the public comment period. Most of these comments fall into the categories listed here, which I'll describe next. Staff also received a variety of miscellaneous comments that did not result in changes or resulted in only minor edits. In general, such comments raise issues that staff believes are already adequately addressed in the guidance, are unrelated to the three main guidance update topics, and/or are outside of the overall scope of the guidance. Examples of such comments are described in the staff report, and all comment letters can be reviewed in their entirety in the correspondence for this item. Next slide. Digging in a little more, staff received a number of comments related to the new Sea Level Rise scenarios. One set of these comments expresses concerns with the inclusion and use of the high or generally higher-end scenarios. Many of these comments suggest that it is inappropriate for the commission to require LCP jurisdictions and CDP applicants to plan for a worst-case scenario, given the lower likelihood of such a scenario occurring. On the other end of the spectrum, another set of comments suggests that the commission should include a higher 16.4-foot Sea Level Rise scenario that is referenced in the IPCC AR6 report and a variety of related suggested edits. In both instances, changes to the guidance to reflect such suggestions would be out of alignment with the OPC State Sea Level Rise Guidance, which is considered the current best available science on Sea Level Rise for the state of California. Staff from OPC and Ocean Science Trust, as well as the science team working on the state guidance, coordinated extensively with commission staff and other stakeholders in the development of the state guidance, and that document reflects what OPC and key stakeholders have determined to be an appropriately precautionary approach that reflects our current understanding of Sea Level Rise along the California coastline. Commission staff did, however, make a few edits to the policy guidance to provide additional clarity regarding continued scientific uncertainty and the expectation that Sea Level Rise scenarios will continue to evolve. Next slide. The next set of comments staff received relate to tribal considerations. A variety of non-tribal entities noted that there is a lack of parity in the guidance between acknowledging and addressing the concerns of non-tribal environmental justice communities and the concerns of tribes, and comments include a variety of suggested edits for where tribes and tribal concerns should be referenced throughout the guidance to give greater consideration to traditional tribal perspectives. Commission staff did go through the guidance in response to comments to add some additional references to tribal concerns as suggested, and to add additional references to the commission's tribal consultation policy as a resource for engagement with tribal communities. As an overarching note, though, I want to highlight that although the environmental justice movement is inclusive of tribal and indigenous communities due to their disproportionate exposure to environmental burdens, lack of access to environmental benefits, and systemic oppression, tribal communities face unique challenges that are related to but distinct from other environmental justice communities. Staff has added additional reference to this distinction- Staff has added additional reference, reference to this distinction, but addressing the vulnerabilities, adaptation strategies, and other planning topics specific to tribal communities in relation to sea level rise requires a more detailed and comprehensive approach, which was out of the scope of the NOAA-funded broader EJ project. Commission staff will continue to coordinate with tribes through its formal consultation procedures, and will work with and encourage local governments to incorporate tribal perspectives in sea level rise planning work. More broadly, staff believes that a thorough discussion of tribal concerns related to sea level rise is warranted, and will seek additional resources to better understand how sea level rise impacts tribal cultural resources in the coastal zone. Next slide. Next, staff received a letter from the California League of Cities with comments pertaining to SB 272 and ongoing coordination with local governments. Specifically, the letter sought clarifications and edits regarding some of the language of SB 272 and how it was initially presented in the guidance. These comments related primarily to language in the bill pertaining to deadlines for the plans, as well as funding considerations. Changes on these topics were made as suggested. The League of Cities also requested adding an additional guiding principle related to the importance of and need to coordinate with local governments to support sea level rise adaptation planning, and staff made this edit as suggested as well. Next slide. Staff also received several comment letters that include requests or suggestions for an expanded discussion on risks posed by toxic substances and contaminated sites given sea level rise, as well as requests for more stringent standards related to cleanup of contaminated sites. In general, no changes were made based on these comments, as the risks related to sea level rise groundwater changes and contaminated sites, as well as adaptation approaches related to these concerns, are already generally discussed in the guidance, and more specific standards and recommendations are outside of the coastal commission's purview. However, references to the need to coordinate with Department of Toxic Substances Control, the state and regional water boards, and other state and federal agencies with water quality management rules were added to these sections. Next slide. Lastly, staff received several comments related to Chapter Eight, which discusses the legal context of adaptation planning, primarily focusing on the discussion around the commission interpretation of the definition of existing structure. These comments suggest that, given the ongoing litigation that involves this interpretation, it is inappropriate to include this discussion in the guidance. Some comments suggest editing that section, deleting that section, or deleting the entirety of Chapter Eight. Given the ongoing nature of the case, there is no way to know when, how, or even if the courts will finally rule on the issue, and thus, staff does not believe at this time that there is a need to change how the guidance discusses the commission's longstanding position on this issue. When the litigation is concluded, commission staff will evaluate whether changes to Chapter Eight and other parts of the guidance are needed. Next slide. As an overall summary, although various edits were made to clarify, correct, add context, and emphasize certain portions of the document, the proposed final draft of the 2024 update to the sea level rise policy guidance does not fundamentally alter the content or recommendations of the prior draft that was released in July. Staff is recommending adoption of the 2024 update to the sea level rise policy guidance, and the motion and resolution are on Page Three of the staff report. Staff is recommending a yes vote. And with that, I'll conclude the presentation. Staff's available for questions.
Thanks so much. It was an excellent presentation, and thank you so much for all your work on this. It's been quite a long process, and it's great to see it reach this point. So I'm going to open the hearing now for public comment on this item.
Okay. We have two speakers. First, we'll start with Raina Stapelman, or Rain Stapelman, and then Aleen Vya.
All right.
Rain.
Given there's only two speakers, we'll have three minutes per speaker.
Okay. And when you're able to, please unmute. You're being promoted and as a panelist right now. And go ahead. I see that you're unmuted.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Hart and commissioners. I am Raina Stapelman, the Vice President of Smart Coast, California. I'm grateful for the opportunity to submit our comments regarding the current California Coastal Commission Public Review Draft SLR Policy Guidance Update. We are a 501(c)(3) organization established in 2019 to promote and advocate for smart land use policies affecting California's 1,271 miles of coastline. Smart Coast, California is dedicated to community sustainability, property rights, and the environment. We submit that the references to public trust in the California Coastal Commission's SLR Policy Guidance Update should be further defined and clarified to indicate that property, including submerged lands and tidal lands that were the subject of a confirmed Mexican land grant, are not subject to the public trust. Case law 1984 Supreme Court ruling, Summa Corp. versus California State Lands Commission. Smart Coast would like to express concern for the following policies and suggest modifications or considerations which were stated in our September 23rd letter. California Coastal Commission Sea Level Rise Policy Guidance, Page 47, Item Number Eight. We submit that this economic analysis be a robust study of the potential outcome of the policies proposed on the coastal jurisdiction's tax base, both public and privately held landmark at value at risk, and cost of services provided. Goal A7 uses language that is undefined, areas vulnerable to sea level rise, and should be clarified or stricken from the document, as this is currently being contested in a court of law. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this document.
Here, thank you. And then Aleen Vya. Aleen, I seem to be having trouble promoting you in as a panelist. You should be able to unmute now as an attendee.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. My name is Aleen Vya, and I am a proud member of the Oceano Beach Community Association. The Oceano Beach Community Association has been a strong environmental justice activist organization for about six years now. And I am here to thank the Coastal Commission for this new sea level rise policy. I was part of the advisory committee and along with others from California. I want to thank you for letting us participate and taking our input on this sea level, sea level rise policy. Who, who better to give you input for this important crucial policy than the activists that have given all their soul and work when it comes to environmental justice for their communities? I want to thank you again and urge you to adopt this unanimously. And thank you again for weaving it into this policy, taking all our input, and making California proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Thanks so much, Chris, and thank you to the speakers. I'll now turn to the staff, and I assume there's no, or is, do you have any response to the comments?
Not really. I will note that we did make one minor change to the definition of public trust resources to slightly expand how we describe that. It is similar to how it's described in the public trust principles that were recently adopted by the commission.
Okay. Thanks, Kelsey. Any commissioner comments? Vice Chair? Also, a motion would be great. You're inclined to do that.
Just a comment. It's fine.
I can do both. I can make the motion. I move that the commission adopt the 2024 update to the sea level rise policy guidance pursuant to staff recommendation, and staff recommends a yes vote.
All right.
I'll second that. If I could speak to the second, that'd be good.
Sure. We have a motion, Vice Chair Escalante, and Commissioner Wilson, what is your, go ahead and make your comment.
I just wanted to thank staff and, and all the members of the public and all the organizations that participated in this, and also want to thank the working group that Commissioner Harmon and I are on, the local government's working group, and appreciate the staff helping guide us through, through that. And I see the reflection of that work in, in how we're moving forward here. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair, have you have a comment prior to taking a vote?
Yes. Just real quick to put this a little bit into context, because I was, I was looking through some of the nuances and the correspondence and, and some of the comments, and, you know, I, I just, when we talk about the climate crisis, and I mean, it still seems very sort of hypothetical, right? It seems like it's so far away, and I, I just came back from a trip to the Amazon River, to the Amazon Basin, and I had, the first time I was there was like 25 years ago, and I was super young and adventurous. And going back all these years later and finding it in what I, you know, the words fail me, devastating, absolutely devastating sight of this dramatic drought, you know? About 80 to 90% of water levels have dropped, and, you know, one of the most voluminous rivers in the world, and that is truly creating some, you know, chain effects down there. Wildfires, crop damage, fish supplies dropping, wildlife dropping, dying on the spot, you know, transportation being really impacted, cutting hydropower, cutting education access, and life-saving services, because people usually navigate across the rivers and tributaries, which are now dry. And this is increasing and enabling and worsening already illegal activity problems, deforestation, trafficking, mining, and this is creating permanent land changes because of all the sedimentation that's happening. So as we speak, we're losing the Amazon Basin, and all that water is going somewhere, you know? I think Valencia in Spain got some of it, you know? And it's going to be moving around this planet, and it's going to be creating some, I mean, I never imagined seeing such an extreme situation without, with my eyes. So I'm just, to bring it back to sea level rise planning, we really need to be very cautious and very conservative about how we, we go about moving forward with, with how we, we planned our coastal use. I, I just, after seeing what I saw, I, I came out alarmed, really, really alarmed of, of what's happening around the world and, and what we may just, you know, the changes are happening really fast as well, much faster than anybody. So talk about, you know, 2100 timeline and the argument of whether high level, mid-level. I hope everyone who's, who's listening and has any interest along the coast that may be impacted, really, I mean, takes this too hard, that it's, you know, nobody here in this agency wants to take anybody's property, of course not. But we have our eyes open to what the reality of, of this crisis is. So I just wanted to, to tie that in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other requests to speak by commissioners, I'll ask for roll call vote on this item, please.
Commissioner Akiti.
Yes.
Akiti, yes. Commissioner Pacheco.
Yes.
Pacheco, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nodoff.
Aye.
Nodoff, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Oranga.
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes. And a reminder that this weekend is King Tides, so everybody get out and check it out. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
It's not far away. It's right there.
Wilson, yes. Chair Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. We're now going to turn to Item 7, the Consent Calendar. Cassidy, you're going to be presenting that.
Thank you, Chair Hart. Next, Item 7A is Consent Calendar for All Districts on the agenda today. We have three items agendized on the consent calendar today from our South Coast District, and District Director Steve Hudson would like to speak briefly on one of these items.
Okay. Thank you. There is an addendum for Item 7A, the CDP application by the City of Santa Monica, and that application is for the replacement of the entrance bridge to the Santa Monica Pier. This addendum adds a special condition, requiring a program to address potential noise and vibration impacts during construction to an adjacent aquarium operated by Heal the Bay. I would like to note that this project is an example of where commission staff worked collaboratively with a local government that received a Caltrans Local Assistant Grant for public access infrastructure improvements. And when our staff learned of the issue raised by Heal the Bay last week, we reached out to both Heal the Bay and the city to discuss potential solutions. And I'd like to thank both parties for working closely with each other and our staff to find a mutually agreeable solution. Both the city and Heal the Bay have indicated they are in agreement with the condition added in the addendum. And with this change, Heal the Bay has submitted a letter indicating they are now in support of the project. Thus, our staff continues to recommend this item be approved today as part of the consent calendar, and I'll turn the mic back over to Deputy Director Toifel.
Thank you, Steve. With that, staff is not aware of any opposition to the three items on the consent calendar today, and the applicants are in agreement with the staff recommendations. Thus, we recommend the commission vote and approve these items.
All right. Thank you so much. Do any commissioners have an ex parte on any of the items on the consent calendar? All right. Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have one person who wishes to speak. And then for Item 7A, we also have two people in the room from Santa Monica, Alex Nazarchuk and Robert Zach, available for questions. Our speaker is on Zoom, Brandon Strauss. And Brandon, you're being promoted as a panelist right now. When you're able to, please unmute. And Brandon wishes to speak on Items 7B and 7C.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm representing Items 7B and C, and I just want to reserve the right to speak on those items if they happen to be taken off the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers.
All right.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second, and I have a comment.
I have a. Okay. Just a second. First, let's see, did someone have a comment that's not making a motion? Okay. So let's start with Commissioner Nodoff, and then we'll proceed.
I just wanted to, sometimes we move through these consent ones so quickly, and I'd like to highlight that, you know, again, we have an ADU on consent. So as I observed earlier, we try and move these things through. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I just want, just to clarify, on the Mad River Shellfish Nursery, I don't think I had an ex parte, because I did talk to these folks about road issues that they were having a while back, because they're folks in my district. And I did get a tour of this amazing facility, and I want to say that they didn't discuss with me that there was a permit at the time, so I didn't know, but I just want to put it out there. So it is, for everyone who here who doesn't understand or know this location, it's a really, a, a, a place where, it's a shellfish nursery that's, that's one of the oldest in California. It has been a leader on a very small scale in, in, in helping the, this industry and these farmers produce oysters and clams over many, many years. And, and they, it's, it's been passed down through various families and folks, and it's just, just small farmers doing their job of providing food and many other benefits to the state of California. So I just want to shout out to those folks, because they really went through a lot to get as far as they've gotten, and so, thanks.
So I think that might be one of the items on the items removed, which would be the next item, but.
Sorry about that.
But that's fine. We'll just, just apply your comments and your quasi-ex parte to that one. All right. So we have another, yes, Commissioner.
Was 7 moved off consent?
Uh, 7, this is the consent calendar, 7A, B, and C.
7A, sorry. 7A was not removed.
7A is not removed.
Okay. I actually have an ex parte.
Okay, please.
So at approximately, I'm trying to remember the time, because I was driving to the airport. At approximately, I would say, four o'clock yesterday afternoon, I got a call from Richard Katz regarding the Santa Monica Pier item, which I believe was 7A. We didn't talk about any details, and nothing other than this item was supposed to be heard, and maybe it might have been pulled, but we didn't get into the details, but in an abundance of caution, although I don't technically think this is an ex parte, I just wanted to mention it.
Thanks so much, Commissioner. Any other commissioner comments? All right. Thanks so much, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner comments? All right. So we'll return to Commissioner Rice for a motion on item seven, the consent calendar.
I moved it.
Okay, she moved it. Thank you for reminding me of that. And we have a second? Commissioner Wilson? All right. Is there any objection to consensus for unanimous approval of this item? All right. Seeing none, this item is approved, and those items are adopted, and we'll move on to item eight. Mr. Teufel.
Thank you, Chair. Item eight is for the items to be moved from regular to consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. As mentioned during the agenda changes memo earlier this morning, there are three items staff recommends be moved to consent calendar, and those are item ten A, permanent application by the Mad River Slough Shellfish Nursery, as Commissioner Wilson noted, uh, for an aquaculture project in Humboldt County. And I'd like to extend appreciation to the owners of that facility for coming down this morning, uh, to be available for questions if any arise. Additionally, we have item fifteen B for a fisheries restoration project in Del Norte County, and finally, item nineteen A for residential development in Hermosa Beach. District Director Shanna Gray would like to share some brief comments on the fisheries restoration project, item fifteen B, before we proceed.
Good morning. Um, yes, I'd like to speak to the CDFW Fisheries Restoration Program Application today. I really just wanna take a moment to recognize our partnership with CDFW staff on this. Um, we work to cut green tape and provide efficiencies in the permitting process. Our staff worked very closely together over a number of months, um, to develop what we're calling the Coordinated Annual Permit Process, or CAP. Um, the objective is really to, um, consider all projects under the program, um, in the coastal zone, under one consolidated annual CDP for each grant year's, um, grant awards. And today is the first annual CDP, um, reviewed under this new process, and it's actually for two voluntary restoration projects, one in Del Norte County and also one in Santa Barbara County. Um, commission staff was able to be involved early in this process. We were able to synthesize our recommendations with the recommendations of the other permitting agencies, and we just really wanna thank CDFW staff for working with us, having a successful partnership, and really, um, being willing and open to modify the process to reflect our concerns. So just wanna say that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Gray. And I would agree, it's great to see the streamlined process begin to come into effect and to be able to approve both these, particularly on consent. It's great. All right. Um, so now this is item eight. I'm gonna ask if any, there are any expartes. I heard from Commissioner Wilson that that was applicable to this item eight. So we've heard that. Any other expartes? All right. Are there any members of the public wish to speak on any of these items?
Uh, yes. Uh, for item fifteen B, move to consent, um, we have one person available for questions. And then for nineteen A, we have two people who wish to speak, Brandon Strauss and Lance Jones. Uh, Brandon Strauss, you're being promoted in, and then followed by Lance Jones. And when you're able to, please unmute.
Okay. Thank you again, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm representing nineteen A, and Lance Jones is one of the applicants. Um, each of us are really just here to reserve the right to speak on the, on the item if it's removed from consent. Thank you.
And then Lance Jones, if you wish to speak or not.
I'd just like to reiterate what Brandon just mentioned. Uh, like to speak if it's removed, uh, but I would also like to thank and appreciate the commission for, uh, the work they're doing.
Thank you. And no other speakers.
All right. Great. Bring it back to the commission. Um, ask if anyone wants to remove any of the items that have been taken, uh, put onto the consent calendar. Seeing none, are there any comments? If not, uh, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar items that were removed from the...
I'll make a motion to approve it, and I just wanted to, um, make a, it was good to see in nineteen A that they're maintaining the two units. So that's an important, uh, reason I would support it being on consent.
Yeah, that was great and very innovative approach, and thank you so much to the applicants for, uh, working with our staff on that. That was, I agree with you, that was great to see that. All right, so...
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Nodoff, second by Commissioner Wilson. There's no other comments. Is there a consensus for unanimous approval of the consent calendar, item eight?
Yes.
All right. In that case, the consent calendar is approved. All right, we're going to trail item nine just for a few minutes. We're gonna move, uh, item ten A has been adopted on consent, as we just mentioned. So we're gonna go to South Central Coast. Mr. Hudson, DDR.
Thank you. That does bring us to item eleven, the deputy director's report for our South Central Coast District. This month, we have one permit waiver and one emergency permit, uh, permit included in that report. For that emergency permit, it was issued to Caltrans to repair approximately one hundred and fifty feet of existing riprap slope protection along Pacific Coast Highway in Ventura County. And that was necessary to protect a segment of the highway that was in imminent danger of collapsing from being undermined, undermined due to wave action. That work included removal of a partially destroyed public access stairway that had fallen to the beach, and it is required to be replaced as a condition of both a previously approved coastal development permit, as well as a condition of this emergency permit. That concludes my report. I'm not aware of any opposition to any of the items being reported today, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the deputy director's report. I am available for questions.
Thanks, Mr. Hudson. Are there any speakers on this, uh, on item eleven?
I know. We just had one available for questions.
All right. Do three or more commissioners object to an item on the deputy director's report? All right. Seeing no objection, the commission concurs. We'll move on then to item twelve, if we're prepared to do that. Yep. All right.
Thank you. Item twelve A will be presented by Esther Sudri, the commission's new mapping program manager. Esther is taking over for Greg Benoit, our current mapping program manager, who will be retiring at the end of the year after thirty-three years of public service with the commission. And Kate and Cassidy will be making a more formal announcement of Greg's retirement and celebrating his time with the commission at our December meeting. But I, since I have the mic, I would like to briefly take this opportunity to say thank you to Greg, who has successfully led our mapping unit for many years, and we are also excited to welcome Esther to her new role. If we could pull up the PowerPoint, please, and Esther, take it away.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, Chair Hart and members of the commission. The next item on your agenda is the Revised Post-LCP Certification Permit and Appeal Jurisdiction, or PostCert Map for the City of Oxnard. The revised map depicts areas within the city where the Coastal Commission retains permit authority and geographic appeal jurisdiction. In addition, the revised map includes recommended transfer of commission permit authority for a relatively small portion of a residential development located in the vicinity of Woolley Road and the Edison Canal. Next slide, please. This slide shows the Revised PostCert Map also found in Exhibit Two of the staff report. Jurisdictional boundaries depicted in the PostCert Map remain essentially the same as the previously certified map in nineteen ninety-six. This map has been revised to reflect more accurate jurisdictional boundaries, in addition to the proposed transfer of commission permit authority that I will discuss in more detail on the next slide. Commission staff has reviewed the revised draft map and jurisdictional boundaries with the city, and the city is in agreement with the map adoption recommendation. The commission's retained permit jurisdiction is in the, in the city of Oxnard, is shown in red crosshatch in the map, and consists entirely of lands seaward of the mean high tide line and public trust lands, historic tide lands, whether filled or unfilled. The appeal jurisdiction boundary, shown in light blue on the map, is based primarily on the first public road paralleling the sea designation, except where the designated road is situated closer than three hundred feet from the mean high tide line, three hundred feet from inland extent of beach, or one hundred feet from wetland. Next slide, please. The Coastal Act provides a provision that allows for transfer of retained permit jurisdiction to a, to a local government. The City of Oxnard has requested transfer of the commission's retained permit jurisdiction for approximately a three-acre portion of the existing Anacapa Townhomes residential development, as seen here. The recommended transfer area is mapped as potential public trust lands within the commission's retained permit jurisdiction. The three-acre residential site at Woolley Road and Edison Canal are now filled and developed and are located within an area which are committed to urban uses. For this reason, staff concurs with the city that transfer of coastal development permit authority would allow for efficient management of the transfer area and for review of any future development on the site by the city pursuant to its LCP. Thus, staff recommends approval of transfer of the commission's retained permit jurisdiction for the requested area. If approved, the commission will retain appeal authority over the entire transfer area, shown here in blue. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends approval of the transfer area and the revised City of Oxnard Post-LCP Permit and Appeal Jurisdiction map. The motion is found on page four of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any expartes on this item? All right. Do we have any speakers on this item?
No speakers.
All right. Bring it back to the commission. Sorry, I lost my place here. All right.
I'll move, uh, twelve A. Do I need to read the motion?
Yeah, why don't you read it?
Okay, hold on.
You have it? It's on, uh, page, uh, four.
Got it. I move that the commission approve, as submitted, the City of Oxnard's proposed transfer area MA dash two zero two four dash zero zero two of the commission's retained permit jurisdiction, and that the commission approve the revised City of Oxnard Post-LCP Certification Permit and Appeal Jurisdiction map prepared by staff for MA dash two zero two four dash zero zero two pursuant to the staff recommendation. Asking for a yes vote.
All right. We have a second.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, uh, by Commissioner Rice, and we have a second, and I would ask if there's any objection to consensus for unanimous approval of this item. Seeing none, the item is approved. We're gonna continue to trail the earlier item, and we're gonna move on to fifteen A?
Thank you, and thirteen A will...
Oh, thirteen A, excuse me.
Thirteen A will be presented via Zoom by Sam Fierer, a coastal program analyst in our South Central Coast District. If we could pull up the PowerPoint, please, and Sam, uh, take it away.
Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is item thirteen A, in which the University of California Santa Barbara, or UCSB, is requesting the approval of a notice of impending development for after-the-fact approval of the placement in limited-term retention of three hundred sandbags for erosion protection on the seaward side of the southern extent of Lagoon Road. The subject site is located at Campus Point Beach on the university's main campus. Next slide, please. The Lagoon Road berm was constructed in the early nineteen fifties from compacted rubble and fill, and functions as a weir that separates the campus lagoon from Campus Point Beach. The top of the berm contains a segment of the California Coastal Trail, and is also used for maintenance access for a seawater pump station located halfway along the berm. Since its construction, the seaward aspect of the Lagoon Road berm has been subject to the erosive forces of tidal and wave action, and the berm, berm has experienced significant erosion as a result. Despite various efforts to protect the road berm, the university estimates that portions of the berm have eroded by as much as six feet since 2014. Commission enforcement staff, commission enforcement staff are aware of past unpermitted development at the subject site and are coordinating with the university separately on these matters. Next slide, please. The winter storms of 2023 and 2024 caused additional erosion along the road berm both north and south of the seawater pump station, undercutting the lagoon trail in asphalt pipes and further exposing the berm's underlying rubble and fill. In an effort to prevent further erosion, on January thirtieth, 2024, the university placed a total of three hundred individual forty-pound geotextile sandbags by hand along twenty-nine feet of the road berm north and south of the pump station. In response, commission staff notified the university that after-the-fact approval of the project would require a notice of impending development. Next slide, please. The proposed project would authorize the limited-term retention of three hundred sandbags at the subject site, providing a temporary solution to ongoing erosion challenges, while the university explores longer-term planning solutions for the Lagoon Road berm in the campus lagoon itself, as required by the certified LRDP. In order to ensure that the sandbags, which are made of a synthetic geotextile material, do not degrade, which could result in microplastic pollution, or migrate into adjacent beach areas, staff is recommending Special Condition Two to require year-round monitoring of the sandbags, to require immediate removal of damaged sandbags, and to allow for one-to-one replacement with bags composed of natural fibers only throughout the retention period. Further, Special Condition One would require removal of all sandbags from the subject site within three years of the initial date of placement, and would require that a new noid be submitted for any proposed sandbag placement or retention beyond that date. Staff is recommending Special Conditions one through three to ensure that the proposed activities will be conducted in a manner protective of coastal resources. As conditioned, staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the university's certified LRDP. The motion to approve the Notice of Impending Development can be found on page five of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any expartes? All right. Do we have public, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's any public comment?
No speakers.
No speakers. Bringing it back to the commission to ask there, uh, any questions or comments, and if not, a motion, which is on page five. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I move that the commission determine that the development described in the Notice of Impending Development UCS dash NOID dash zero zero eight dash twenty-four at Lagoon Road as conditioned, excuse me, is consistent with the Certified University of California Santa Barbara Long Range Development Plan. I'm asking for a yes vote.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there an objection, objection to a consensus, or is there consensus for unanimous approval of this item? All right. Seeing no objection, this item is approved. And that brings us to item fifteen, I believe, fifteen A?
Yes, fifteen A, which will be presented via Zoom by Brooke Lutz, a coastal program analyst in our South Central Coast District. If we could pull the PowerPoint up, please. And Brooke, it's over to you.
Morning, commissioners. Item fifteen A is a coastal development permit application by the Ventura Port District for a consolidated CDP to implement paid parking at the Harbor Cove Beach Parking Lot. This lot is partially within the retained CDP jurisdiction of the commission and partially within the City of Ventura's LCP jurisdiction. This proposal also includes the installation of payment kiosks, as well as regulatory and mobile payment signage. Next slide, please. As shown here, the Harbor Cove Beach Parking Lot is located within the Ventura Harbor in the City of Ventura. This lot provides direct access to the adjacent sandy beach and is located in close proximity to several visitor-serving amenities, including the Channel Islands National Park Visitor Center. The proposed paid parking program would convert all two hundred and thirty-nine public parking spaces in the lot, including six ADA compliance spaces and three electric vehicle charging spaces, which are all currently available at no charge, into paid public parking during weekends and holidays. Specifically, the proposed fee would be one dollar an hour, or ten dollars for a day pass for parking durations that exceed four hours. Paid parking would be implemented from ten AM to eight PM on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, and parking would remain free Monday through Thursday. Payment kiosks will be installed, as well as regulatory signage informing visitors of the parking fees and hours, and mobile payment signage to provide instructions for mobile payment options. Next slide, please. To provide some additional context, this proposal is part of a larger comprehensive parking management plan within Ventura Harbor, and as shown on... parking management plan within Ventura Harbor, and as shown on this slide, the lots being converted to paid parking on weekends and holidays are outlined in purple, while those shown in orange will remain free at all times. The parking fees and hours of operations will be the same across all paid parking lots shown in this exhibit. And to clarify, all parking lots in the harbor, except for the Harbor Cove Beach Lot, are under the City of Ventura's CDP permitting jurisdiction. This paid parking program shown here was approved by the City of Ventura in May of this year, and the Ventura Port District has indicated that the overall goal of this parking management plan is to improve parking turnover and alleviate congestion in high-demand areas during peak times. Next slide, please. In coordination with commission staff, the applicant has designed the proposed parking program to be lower cost. The program focuses on times of highest parking demand and maintains free public parking in all lots on off-peak days from Monday through Thursday. Further, the parking fees will not be required before 10:00 a.m. Friday through Sunday, allowing for free early morning beach use. And finally, the proposed parking fees are set at $1 an hour or $10 for an all-day pass, which are comparable, if not lower, to parking fees charged at other nearby public beach lots. Staff recommends approval of this CDP with three special conditions. Special condition one requires that any increases to the fee structure or hours during which parking fees are in effect would require a CDP amendment. Special condition two requires that the applicant submit a final signage plan and that the proposed signage be posted in English as well as Spanish. And special condition three sets a five-year term for the permit and requires that the applicant submit an updated parking study upon reapplication. This provision allows for a future assessment of the paid parking program's effectiveness and its impacts on coastal access. This also allows for any necessary adjustments to accommodate changing circumstances such as shifts in parking demand or any local developments. In closing, staff believes that the proposed project with these conditions will not have significant adverse impacts on public access or recreation opportunities and is consistent with both the policies of the Coastal Act and the guidance policies of the LCP. Thus, the notion and resolution to approve this CDP with special conditions are on page four of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any ex parte's? Open the public hearing. Any public comments?
We only had one speaker, but we aren't able to find them in the meeting, Kim Malloy. And then we had two other people available for questions.
All right, great. Bring it back to the commission, or, well, bring it back to the commission for any comments or a motion on page four.
I'm happy to make the motion, Madam Chair.
All right, Commissioner Agiri.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there an objection to consensus for unanimous approval of this item? Seeing none, the item is approved.
I need to read the motion.
I thought you made the motion. I'm sorry. Please go ahead and read it. We're moving so quickly. It's like a speed dating.
I could feel Louis' eyes. I move that the commission approve coastal development permit 4-24-0418 pursuant to the staff recommendation. I recommend a yes vote.
Thanks, Commissioner, excuse me, for that. All right, and who made the second? Vice Chair Escalante?
Yes, second.
All right, now we have a motion that's been read, and we have a second, and I'll return to ask the commission if there is consensus for unanimous approval of this item. Seeing no objection, this item is approved. And that brings us down to the DDR for South Coast District, I believe, item 16.
Thank you. It is item 16, which is the deputy director's report for our South Coast District. In that report this month, we have five waivers, one immaterial amendment, and one permit extension. I would like to note that three of the five waivers being reported today, as well as the one waiver that was reported as part of the deputy director's report for our South Central Coast District earlier, are all for accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, projects. And those are examples of how your staff is working to expedite through the commission's waiver process these new ADU and housing projects that staff, after review of the individual applications, is able to determine would not result in any potential impacts to coastal resources. We're not aware of any opposition to any of the items being reported today, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the deputy director's report. I am available for questions.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Hudson. Any speakers?
No speakers.
All right, do three or more commissioners object anything? Not seeing any objection, the commission concurs. All right, we're going to go ahead and take a break at this time. It's 10:43 now. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? We'll come back at five minutes to 11:00, and we'll have our final item of the day. Okay, everyone is coming back in. We're going to return to the item that we trailed earlier. I think that's the only item on our agenda left for today, except for closed session. So first, we have the DDR Energy Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency, Mr. Teufel? Or is it just the report? There's no DDR? Just the report?
Yes, we do have a deputy director report.
Okay.
This is-
Just one sec. I want to welcome our commissioner and controller.
Yes, I-
Lee Cohen, how are you? Excellent timing. All right, Mr. Teufel.
Thank you, Chair. This brings us to item nine, the deputy director report for Energy Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency. We have four negative determinations in the deputy director report. Unfortunately, we weren't able to post those negative determinations until, I believe, late yesterday, and so what we're going to do is we're going to report those again in December to ensure that the public and the commission has time to review those documents.
Okay.
I believe we have a couple of public comments signed up to speak on that item as well, so...
So will we hear those public comments in December as well, then?
I think we'll, one option would be to give the commenters the ability to speak today if they feel they want to, or they can reserve their comments until December.
Just turn to counsel. I'm not sure about commenting on things that aren't on the agenda. How does that work?
Just to be clear, the negative determinations are actually disinformational for the, it's an executive director determination. It's informational for the public and for the commission, so I would recommend if they've signed up to give comment, we should allow them to go ahead if they wish, but we'll just report it again to make sure there's ample opportunity for review.
Okay, that's great. So why don't we turn to public comment, then, on the folks that were-
Okay. One of them was actually signed up for item 9A, so we just had one for this item, Nina Beatty. Nina, you're on a phone. You should be able to unmute now.
Good morning, thank you. And thank you for postponing these items until December. Because of the reports not being available, there hasn't been time to review them in any depth. However, these projects, three of these projects, the two Navy projects and the wildlife tracking system for National Park Service appear to have significant marine impacts and harm to wildlife, in contrast to the Navy and National Park Service claims. For instance, the formal comments by the park service's parent agency, the U.S. Department of Interior, in 2014 warned about the impacts to birds, including deaths to birds from communication towers. Department of Interior said the placement and operation of communication towers, including unguide, unlit, monopole, or lattice-designed structures, impact protected migratory birds in two ways. The first is by injury, crippling loss, and death from collisions with towers and their supporting guy wire infrastructure where present. The second significant issue associated with communication towers involves impacts from non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation emitted by them. Radiation studies at cellular communication towers were begun circa 2000 in Europe and continue today on wild nesting birds. Study results have documented nest-in-site abandonment, plumage deterioration, locomotion problems, reduced survivorship, and death. In addition, if there are tracking devices fitted on birds, those also have been found to cause harm to birds as well as other species. The Navy's claims as well should be rigorously evaluated by independent experts. We're very familiar with the, with other situations where the Navy has claimed no damage, and yet the opposite has happened. In view of that, I, a hearing on these three items is necessary, and it must be listed on the agenda itself. Having these inside a director's report, where most of the public will never look, is not only inappropriate for the public's information, but also California law specifies that any decisions you make, items on the agenda must be on the agenda and explained so that the public knows what they are. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually just wanted to make sure with the other speaker that they intend to speak on 9A, Leslie Purcell. Did you wish to speak on the deputy director's report or on item 9A, the Tijuana River?
No, the deputy director report.
Okay.
I couldn't sign up for that. Thank you. Okay. Well, as noted, the further addendum was not available until late yesterday, so I'm glad that it's being postponed. I believe that, you know, there is concern with the Navy, these large undersea vehicles that they're wanting to test, and I note that they're the size of many of the whales or bigger than a lot of the whales that go through there, and so it's a concern. I know that the Navy also is doing other kinds of testing. I don't know specifics on that, but I think that there needs to be a little bit more of a cumulative impacts assessment of all these tests that are being done out there in these areas, and it is near the Channel Island Marine Reserve and Preserve, and so I think that there's a possibility of really detrimental impacts to some of the marine wildlife out there. And I also noted that the Navy admitted five whale strikes since 2009, which is about one a year, and they do say it's by larger vessels, but this has been something ongoing that the Channel Island Sanctuary Advisory Commission has worked on and actually have gotten a lot of protection by encouraging and actually having a fund to get vessels that go through this area to slow down, and it's actually been protective of the whales. So I just think that there needs to be a little bit more analysis of the overall impact. And also, you know, we've got more of the rocket launches going off from Vandenberg with marine debris associated with their weather balloons and other things, so it's a concern, and I would appreciate a little bit more analysis of the overall impact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good thing I checked.
Yeah. Thank you.
No more speakers.
And there are no speakers on the other part?
I know.
Okay, great. All right, bringing it back to you, Mr. Teufel.
Thank you. Want to just express appreciation for the commenters and the points they raised. We can elaborate further on those when we report these next month as well. But do want to note that the documents available, particularly on the Navy item, provide extensive discussion of the analysis and protective measures that will be in place on that project. So that brings us to item 9A in our monthly update on the Tijuana River pollution crisis. I wanted to first let you know that in response to the commission's direction from last month, we prepared two letters from Chair Hart to sign, for Chair Hart to sign and sent on behalf of the commission. The first letter is to President Biden requesting immediate assistance through a federal emergency declaration. This letter was completed earlier in the week and is also available for review under the commission correspondence item on our online agenda, item 6B. We also drafted a second letter to the International Boundary and Water Commission detailing the results of the compliance assessment I presented last month and requesting that they take steps to resolve the situation by continuing to expedite the completion of the repairs to the international treatment plant as well as its upgrade and expansion. The letter also requests future coordination and a plan for offsetting impacts to coastal resources resulting from IBWC's failure to maintain and operate the treatment plant consistent with water quality protection standards, both in California's coastal management program and the Clean Water Act. This letter is, was finalized this morning and is also provided for review on the commission's online agenda. We'll be sending copies of both of these letters to a variety of interested parties, elected officials, and they're available on the agenda if any members of the commission would like to download them and share them with folks there aware or maybe interested as well. Further, we're open to any suggestions the commission may have in terms of particular folks that they would like us to send copies of the letters to. With that, I'd like to give the mic to Dr. Hucklebridge to provide a summary of some of the efforts she's been involved with over the past couple of weeks, and I'll ask Chris to please present the slide that sent him earlier. Thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to update the commission on a meeting I had October 23rd with representatives of San Diego County Department of Health and Human Services, including experts in public health and environmental health, as well as a representative of the San Diego Air Pollution Control District. So during that meeting, the county described their recent and ongoing actions they have taken to address the pollution crisis stemming from sewage discharge into the Tijuana estuary. Surveillance started over a year ago from the county, and they've been looking at data streams, outbreak trends, surveillance of particular diseases, particular schools, and other sensitive receptors, and there is that information and data available on their website. They also put in requests to the California Department of Public Health and the National CDC for additional investigations. So the CDC has recently completed what's called a CASPER study. This is the Community Assessment for Public Health Emergency Response. That's what CASPER stands for. It's a population-based assessment. So CDC sent about five personnel down to the area. They interviewed over 200 households, and those interviews were completed in mid-October. The county's currently waiting for CDC clearance and completion of the analysis, and then those results will be published and presented to the public. They've also just been approved for an assessment of chemical exposures survey. This is a person-level exposure study, and that's what we have up here. It's got this A study to just let the public and let the commission know this is going on, so they will be, I guess, you know, working with individuals here to understand what their personal risk and assessment is. They are asking for folks to reach out to them if they are interested in participating in the survey. There's the QR code here up on the screen. We've also included it in, as an attachment to this item on our agenda. So for folks in South San Diego Bay who would like to participate, they can use this QR code here or reach out in the various ways that are described on this flyer to participate in that survey, and it's open through November 22nd. And there's context there for if you have additional questions. So they also wanted to let us know they're working closely with the Air Pollution Control District, and as of October 23rd, the county had received funds from the APCD for additional air purifiers, and we're in the process of developing a process to get those out to the public. So next steps they discussed with me were developing local contamination protocols for sewage-contaminated floodwaters and potentially developing guidance for individual agencies, and then working on enhanced water quality testing and communication protocols with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And so that just concludes the discussion of the meeting I had, and I think concludes staff's remarks, or unless Cassidy, you have anything else.
Yeah, I just received a note, so I wanted to clarify that the letters are available for review under the commission correspondence item W6B on the agenda. And that concludes our remarks, but stand by for any question.
Thank you. Are both letters available now, then?
Yes, both.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for the report and all your work on this critical situation down there. Now, returning to the commission, Commissioner Cohen, did you have any remarks on this?
Why, yes, yes, I do.
Are you prepared? I didn't want to just-
I'm prepared. Good afternoon, good morning, everyone. So first and foremost, I just want to applaud the effort for the tireless advocates that are in this room, and also the advocates that are listening and joining into this meeting virtually. Sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, I want to just thank the residents of Imperial Beach, Mayor Agiri, her staff, and the members of the public who provided comments today and the, and comments to countless public meetings discussing the Tijuana River crisis. Last year- Last year, I served as the Chair of the State Lands Commission, and last month, we held our commission meeting at the city of Imperial Beach's City Council Chambers. And one thing that we heard clearly and distinctly from dozens of Imperial Beach residents and community members who passionately shared their firsthand experiences about living and working near openly flowing sewage. Mayor Aguirre, she graciously spent her morning with me visiting multiple contaminated sites along the Tijuana River as well as the border. And everyone in this room is aware that it's an environmental and economic and social justice disaster. So clean air and clean water are basic human fundamental rights. I think we are all in agreement on that. The coastline belongs to all of us, and this is enshrined in the Coastal Act as well as the public trust doctrine. And what we have before us today is a severe public health disaster impacting a majority, minority, low-income community who have already been historically excluded from the most basic of rights and privileges and freedoms in this country, exacerbated by climate change, intensified by the lack of resolution. And I firmly believe that this community has waited far too long. I just want to remind people that I come from San Francisco. I represented the southeastern neighborhoods of San Francisco communities that were also historically locked out from the coastline, still on to this day, doing ongoing negotiations around a superfund site that EPA and CalEPA are cleaning up, and I say that in quotes. So I can connect to this personally as well as professionally, and it really just breaks my heart. And as your state comptroller, I examine issues with a sharp fiscal lens, and I want to make the case that tax revenues and property values, as well as tax bases, people's tax base, are all heavily impacted by this crisis. There are people on this body that know real estate well and know the value of... The importance of property value. And the full picture of an economic impact extend... The full picture extends much further than what we have time to outline today, but I just want to go over a few. Air pollution and water contamination undisputedly cause adverse health impacts. We have the scientific data to back that up, and the mound of anecdotal evidence is heart-wrenching, as well as heart-wrenching stories from the people who live and breathe around Imperial Beach. Now, what we don't have are the numbers to actually back up how many people are sick and seeking care for the fiscal impacts borne by all the taxpayers to Medi-Cal. And, you know, if you can't count it, you are not counted. And because the community is under-resourced, many are seeking care in non-traditional facilities that are also here in the United States as well as across the border, which unfortunately, if it's across the border, we can't track. So the... So of course, the commission knows that the beach recreation is valuable to the public. We all know that. We can quantify that. We could assign a real dollar value to that, too. Researchers have found that people who are willing to pay $42 per person for a day at the beach, on average, adjusted for inflation, that's somewhere upwards to $50 million in lost non-market value to date. So this is not only an environmental issue, but this is an economic issue for the Imperial Beach community. And we won't fully understand the fiscal and social impacts to the physical and mental as well as the economic health of this community for years, and quite frankly, I'd say even for decades. So what can we do? This is a very complex issue, a complex issue that I think has a simple solution, and that we need federal and state funding. And now we are in the midst of a regime change, so who knows if that federal funding is actually going to come? The longer we wait, the higher the bill, and the more... The greater the impact will be on human life in total. So most Californians have no idea that there is a river of sewage flowing through one of our own communities. And when I say a sewage of a river, sewage flowing, I am not embellishing. I'm not doing too much. This is literally, you see frothy sewage. It's disgusting. It's sad, and it's disgusting. Yeah. So that we have this sewage flowing onto a California beach, and I think that we need to take action and we need to take attention to this issue. I'm taking action. At last month's meeting at the State Lands Commission, I directed staff to agendize a support position on the Border Water Quality Restoration and Protection Act of 2024, which would simply implement the GAO's recommendation and importantly create... It creates a mechanism to authorize the EPA to accept and distribute funding for projects. And so moving forward, I ask... Moving forward, I'll be connecting with federal and state officials to look at opportunities to secure funding, to declare a state of emergency, which I know might make some people squeamish, but it is what it is. I think it's a state of an emergency. I think it create more of a state... I think we need to create more statewide visibility, and we need to be doing everything possible to support the community. I also want to highlight that the... That we are in light of a state budget crisis, but Prop 4 passed. And Prop 4 was a climate bond, and it's an opportunity to invest in the Tijuana River Valley today. So through the State Lands Commission, I've encouraged CNRA to pursue this opportunity. I don't think we can wait any further, and that we need to take action now. Thank you, Madam Chair. I turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And I think that we all feel the same sense of gratitude, deep gratitude, for your involvement in this issue, taking the time and the compassion and the dedication to go down and see what most of us, I think all of us, have seen on several occasions. It's just as you described. I don't think anyone would believe that this is going on in California today, and most people are completely unaware of it. It's a beautiful, beautiful beach that no one can access, and there's poison in the air and the water. It's just horrible.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for that. I'm going to turn to Commissioner Aguirre and ask if you have any comments today on this topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, I want to thank Comptroller Cohen for spending so many hours with us and genuine interest in learning about our plight and how we're being harmed by all of this transboundary pollution. So thank you, and thank you for hosting the meeting in Imperial Beach and giving my community an opportunity to express those feelings and how they're being affected. I also just want to report that I'm very grateful that the CASPER CDC assessment was conducted. I just want to contextualize that with the fact that when the three-day analysis was conducted, it was during a time when the river is being diverted. So we don't get a clear picture of how far and vast those impacts are because the river wasn't flowing. When it flows, it's a different situation. So obviously, more data is important. And as Comptroller Cohen mentioned, thank you so much for your remarks. You made... It makes so much sense. We need a lot more data. We need a lot more research. We need a lot more support. So with that, I'll just report that a couple of weeks ago, we were down at the International Boundary and Water Commission's International Waste Water Treatment Plant's launch, which now, thanks to Commissioner Hina's leadership, the timeline went from seven years to now five years as they do a progressive design and build approach to the plant. So that will be completed now in five years. I also want to report that President... Mexican President Scheinbaum came to the area and visited the San Antonio de los Buenos Treatment Plant, and that plant is slated to be online by the end of January, and that's going to be treating 18 million gallons per day of wastewater. I also want to add that the Imperial Beach-Tijuana River Pollution Task Force has also a health survey that is comprehensive. It's both in English and Spanish. It's going to last 12 months, and we'll have follow-up based on what the health surveys and reports are. That is, just quickly going to plug, it's tjriver.scsu.edu, and that has been, you know, reviewed by many public health experts. That's hopefully going to help us paint a broader picture of how vast the public health implications of this pollution truly are. And then I just want to also add that with Prop 4 being approved, we want to make sure that that funding is directed to the diversion and treatment of the river itself. Because as I just mentioned, the international treatment plant is being completed and will be completed in five years. The San Antonio de los Buenos Treatment Plant will be online in January, but there's still going to be anywhere between 20 and 40 million gallons of untreated wastewater, including industrial waste flowing through our community. So it's important to make sure that we divert and treat the river, and Prop 4 funding can go directly to that. And last, I'll just add that last night, the city of Chilavista, which is a South Bay city adjacent to Imperial Beach in South San Diego, and is also now being impacted. It's about 12, 15 miles away from the river. Because of the residents of Chilavista being impacted by all of the noxious, toxic hydrogen sulfide and other pollutants, they've declared a state of emergency last night as well. So that concludes my report. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just appreciate you so much for all of your work and effort, and I know we all do, and it's just looking for good news. To go from seven years to five years, it's just hard to appreciate that that actually is good news. But, all right. I'm going to open this up for Commissioner comments at this time. Any other commissioners have any comments on this issue? Commissioner Nodoff?
Well, I was just going to observe that Governor Newsom has called a special session to protect California air and water quality from any impacts from the incoming administration, and this seems to me a very important component of that, and I hope that the governor and the legislature will be looking at that in the special session.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. This was an informational item that, of course, we are hearing each month, given its importance, critical importance to the state of California. So that concludes this item. We're now going to adjourn. We're going to take a lunch break for an hour till 12:30, and we'll come back for a closed session at 12:30. And where will that be, Ms. Warren? Here in this room?
Yes.
Okay. So commissioners, you'll have to go out and find some lunch and just be back here at 12:30. I bet there's tons of great places right around here. See you then. We are back in session. Before we go to closed session, we are going to address the statewide items, beginning with approval of minutes. I know that Ms. Miller is here. She's here. All right. Making a grand entrance as she appropriately should. Okay. So I think the only item that there's a report on or any action needed is the approval of the minutes, and those are the minutes of August 7th and August 8th, August 9th. Yeah, that's it. So the August meeting, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move approval of the August minutes.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right. Is anyone opposed to unanimous consent, approval? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Anything else on the statewide items? I know a number of us have meetings coming up this month. I don't think there's any... I haven't... Doesn't appear to be any other reports. All right. So we've dealt with the statewide items. We're now going to adjourn to closed session, and what we'll do is we'll report out of closed session tomorrow morning. All right. So anyone who's not supposed to be here for a closed session, we'd ask you to depart at this time, and then we will move forward.